Okay, this is 2:48 PM on Tuesday, May the 26th. We're gonna have the Sustainability Committee meeting in a minute. I'm going to pause the Zoom recording and then resume it. Once more folks come on board and are ready.
Thank you, David.
Thanks for your help.
All right, Anne Marie, can we forego a roll call here? With Zoom, it makes it pretty easy.
Yeah, I think we all know we're here. Sarah, Dawn, Dave, Mitch, and Anne Marie. How's that?
Oh, that's perfect.
Now, is there a chance that the public is invited to join us? Or do they just view this later? Is that how this is open?
They can listen.
Okay, great. If you're there, welcome.
Yeah, if the public is here, welcome.
Okay, marvelous. So, can I just keep rolling, Anne Marie? Or do you have other business you need to talk to before we jump into the agenda?
Nope, whatever's on the agenda, I... That's all I got from you guys, so not quite sure.
I was just telling Mitch that I was embarrassed that I printed our packet before I looked at the scope of it. That it was two-sided even. But in that, of course, the minutes are right up front. And I was absent at that meeting. I know that doesn't preclude me from voting. But I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February 25th meeting. That's quite a while ago.
I move that we approve them.
I agree.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. The minutes are approved. So, business action items. So, I confess, Anne Marie worked at lightning speed. I just mentioned to her in an email that we used to have... I actually found a T-shirt in my closet that had to do with seal pup protection. This is, as you know, it's... We're just past the peak of the seal puffing season. And they've had really probably a banner year because there's been nobody on the beach. And the rest of this month and through June is really the tail end of it. And so, it's not something for this year. Once upon a time, there was an organization of folks, I think it might have evolved from Green Drinks, which I know a couple of you are familiar with, just a volunteer organization in town, that set out to support the state police effort to protect seal pups by basically having people who were at the ready to respond with a beach chair. And I know that's still ongoing, but it's not city-specific for our seven miles of beach. And at least not to my knowledge, I suppose it could be. But we had T-shirts printed up that said something like "Seal Team sits." And it was just a cute little seal. And we would go and sit down and communicate with each other by cellphone and just try to say, "Hey, folks, try to avoid this area. There's a pup over there 100 yards away." And generally, it worked. Sometimes people said, "No, thanks, I'm gonna walk up and check this seal out." And they were sort of unpleasant, and in my experience, I had a few people who were not great about it. But they're the exception, not the rule. So, that's all I was saying. I don't think it's something immediately. I just think that that would be a... I don't know who else would pick up a cause like that in Lincoln City. And maybe a Sustainability Committee might think about it. Any thoughts? It's not up for action item or anything, just to see if you'd wanna take it up later as an idea.
I didn't know it was a serious problem this year, and there was...
I think it's a cool idea.
Yeah. There was actually an attack of one of the volunteers this year at Glen Eden.
Really?
Yes. She was pepper sprayed and tackled, and her hair was pulled. And it was really... And the seal pup that the person who attacked was trying to rescue ended up dying because of her intervention. So, it was really bad.
That's...
And this was the volunteer who was trying to protect the seal pup?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what you said.
Oh, this was a volunteer who was trying to protect the seal pup?
Yes. She had a sign, you know, the signs that they put in the... They put a stake on a stake in the sand and information about seal pup. And yeah, it was a local...
Wow.
Apparently felt like she knew better than the volunteer did, so.
Nice.
So, it can be difficult, but I think it's a really good idea. I don't know whether, you know, sustainability, I don't know, maybe Audubon could get involved. But yeah, it's a great idea. But I would recommend it be in pairs.
Yeah, actually, that's my experience too. It feels pretty awkward when you're engaging someone in a heated discussion when you feel like, "I'm completely in the right here." And it is, it's maddening, and I can see how it could escalate, actually. One thing I think would help that is if there were serious and professional and nice to see, but hard to avoid signage that was temporarily installed at beach accesses, at least during the... I mean, easy to say, during the daylight hours. I don't know, that involves a lot of work. But at least within the city, to inform those people that the person who encounters that, you know, could refer to. But anyway, it is... That's a terrible story, but it does track with some of my experience. So, yeah, people don't like to be told what to do nowadays. And that, that's tough. But anyway, I think it's something that I just wanted to plop on the radar, as it were. We can address the other side of protecting seal pups. There was a photographer who posted some photos, I think it was Ernie Rose, actually, Dawn, who had these great shots of eagles sitting on the spit thing. Let's not talk about why they were there.
Yes, yes. We can't protect them from that, no.
Right, right.
But I agree that some nice signage, partnering with the group that already does it, maybe partnering with Lincoln City Parks and Rec that has some of the access points, that kind of thing. So, yeah. And of course, Oregon State Parks and State Police too. So, I think it's a great idea.
Well, we can attack that between now and the next season, which I guess would kick off in April. So, let's see. Next up, we had Mitch, you were gonna lead the discussion about the natural plastic alternatives. And Anne Marie forwarded some, an article that you'd found.
Yeah, you know, I... Actually, I was not expecting to be able to attend this meeting today because I had a conflict. Conflict got canceled. So, forgive me if I haven't reviewed my own documents lately. But I came across an interesting document, an interesting story on the environmental kind of news about, I think it was five different companies around the world who had come up with some innovative alternatives to plastic. And it seemed to me that, wouldn't it be cool if we could have a kiosk, some kind of exhibit, that where we actually had donations of a small sample of this material, just not for people to even handle or anything, but to be on display and to say, and just to point out to people that, you know, alternatives may be emerging. And of course, I think we probably all saw within the past week or so Coca-Cola and some, I think it's a beer vendor, have... They have a major new project to produce bottles that degrade within one year. And Coca-Cola is widely known as one of the world's greatest plastic pollutions. Anyway, the idea was that, you know, maybe these companies that are producing these things would be glad to have the word get out and just be able to send them, send us a small sample. And then we have sort of like a little museum type of a description on it. This could be, I mean, I'm thinking this could be outdoors. And in a more general way, Dave, you would know a lot more about people's curiosity and about the kind of things that they're willing to do when they're out here on the coast. I mean, I know that most people are just out here to sort of have a raw, good time on the beach and not be very thoughtful about it. But maybe there's, I mean, maybe there is a little bit of a tourism angle that if people are here, that, you know, they're killing time, we give them something to think about.
I don't think that's a bad sounding idea at all. And in fact, your article, just so you know, Mitch, the one that you sent included Carlsberg, which is the partner with Coca-Cola.
Oh, oh.
And they actually, they actually used that sugar-based PET product inside a cardboard bottle, which is pretty sweet. I can't wait to find it at the Squid. It looks really, really cool. And I was impressed by it. The same article was picked up by The Guardian a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and they had a take on it. And it sounded really, really fascinating. And, you know, it's, and it's one year if it's in, you know, the kind of compostable situation that Oregon doesn't offer right now, but in a traditional landfill still, it's within five years.
Okay. Well, and so, you know, I mean, that would be a little tiny, tiny, tiny baby step towards this theme that we've been developing of linking sustainability with a coastal vacation in people's minds, or like a reason to be here ultimately, when we're really ready to welcome them.
Yeah, no, I love that. I'd love for people to go home and say, "Why is it every time I visit Lincoln City, they're hammering me about sustainability issues?" But I think it'd be fun to sort of gently insert that kind of message while they're here. Because you do want them thinking about it as they walk to the beach from wherever it is their park.
So, there would have to be, you know, obviously, there'd have to be just a simple buy-in from the manufacturers of these things. On the one hand, on our hand, on our side, there would have to be some kind of small budget item for the construction of the appropriate kind of a kiosk if we're gonna have it outdoors. And I don't know, when I think of it, I always think of it as being outdoors.
Well, you know, maybe it's the kind of thing that we could tack on to. I know that Ed Dresdahl had planned on having a visitor center at the D River once the city takes that over. The funding for that was just invested in small business emergency funding, however. So, they're back to square one on that because they'd set aside a nest egg that they just robbed for what I think was a more pressing need, the local funds for the COVID response.
Okay.
So, that's still on the books, it's just they pushed it out a little further. But once that goes up, maybe that's an opportunity for a display case that we could, you know, take advantage of.
Yeah. And if we did, if we did have the construction of a nice durable display case, we'd have the option of, in the future, swapping out the exhibit for something else.
Maybe until, or until the visitor center is set up, we could have some kind of little display case, travel around to different businesses, or like the library here, you know, all over the place, like all over town maybe.
Yeah, I like that idea, yeah.
Great idea.
Yeah. One of the things about incorporating it into the visitor center, once our kiosk or whatever that's at D River is if we were to make it some kind of a permanent plastic pollution exhibit that stays there, there might be some additional funding for the city that they could get from foundations that are in the whole anti-plastic, anti-single-use plastic game. There's some, there's some big foundations and some big money out there that Lincoln City could possibly look at.
Like Surf Rider, maybe?
Surf Rider, and there's others too, private foundations, so.
So, what would be the action step on that, Mitch? Would you be willing to reach out to some of those five people and, or those five organizations?
Sure.
And see if you could talk about getting samples?
Yeah, yeah, I could. I mean, I'd be glad to do that. I seem like, didn't, I had another idea that I think was piggybacked on that, right? Something about...
Yes.
Maybe the development of some kind of a logo?
A zero-waste Lincoln City logo was your point number two.
Oh, obviously, as I recall, it was the idea that maybe we could kind of involve the public by having a contest to create it.
I love that. I don't know how to go about it, but I love that idea.
Well, we just put it in the newspaper, and we just called, put in the call for entries in the newspaper and on the city website. And then we now, then we just wait for the submissions to come in. And it would be, this committee would have, would have the call, the rights, I think, to make a recommendation on the best one to forward to the city council.
No, I like that.
So, yeah, that all, these are all fantastic ideas. So, I think if someone, maybe Mitch, can just summarize that, and then we'll all get it to city council for their approval so that we can get something on the city website.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we could do like the naming of a city park where, like the top few, we choose the top few and then recommend to the city council or something like that?
Yeah.
I don't know, it depends on how many we get, probably, so.
Yeah, city council would definitely, you know, city council, they definitely would wanna be the one to choose it.
Yes. Yeah, that's why I'm thinking if we do the top, you know, two or three, or four or something, I don't know, and then let them choose.
The other piece about this is if we're pointing people to a page on the website that the city might give us to say, "We need a zero-waste Lincoln City logo," we probably need to have that page distill down a easily digestible, "This is what the aspirational zero-waste Lincoln City goal looks like, and you're helping us design a logo that helps us spread the word about that." So, we need to find a way to provide some narrative about, and I know that's been discussed a couple of times at our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so who wants to put that together?
Look at you, Dawn, but you can't tell because you're on Zoom.
Okay, I can take a stab at it. I did a little bit of looking at it before, so. Okay, so, like a paragraph or so?
Yeah, I would think that'd be a good starting point.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Paragraph and a couple of links or something? Okay.
Well, you know, I think the advantage of an idea like this is it really is a very modest idea, that it's low risk, it's low expense, it should be easily achievable. But it does, maybe it would represent a baby step towards our goals in the future.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, yeah. It's very good thinking, Mitch. I like it.
Are we okay to move on to the next item?
We are.
So, the, as I read it, the next one was submitted by Anne Marie, and it was, included two different sample climate action plans. One of them was so hefty, it's, in fact, it's right here, you can hear it. I went and looked up the population of Woodland, California, and found it was 70,000 people. I thought, "Okay." But those are climate action plans that can be quite exhaustive. And then there was a nice counterbalance to that, the Milwaukee one, which was basically a, talking about their climate action planning process that was just a couple of pages. And I guess the question that Anne Marie had was, does the committee have any interest in developing one for the city?
Correct. That was my question. It's been brought up by two different counselors, Council Hinton and Council Casper. So, I'm just anticipating that they will bring it up again. So, I'm forestalling that by trying to get the Sustainability Committee to give me some feedback on that, if they think that's something they'd like to tackle.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I have some history behind this, so I really should tell you about it. This, early this year, I got involved with a couple of tiny, tiny organizations that are basically the same organization down in Newport, 350.org's Central Coast, and Citizens Climate Lobby. And they are spearheaded by a fellow, Dave, have you heard of him, Martin Desmond?
Yeah, I was just on a Zoom call with him a couple of weeks ago.
Yes. And Martin Desmond was kind of the ringleader of this. And we, I met with them for a long time. And there was, they were originally interested in trying to contribute to the Climate Action Committee that, if you will, that was formed by Lincoln County itself. Couple of years ago, Lincoln County Commissioners actually passed some kind of a resolution that created a public-private partnership to address the climate crisis. But unfortunately, to our severe disappointment and frustration, the, even before this pandemic arrived, the county was very, very lackadaisical, to use a polite word, about hosting any meetings for this committee. And it just wasn't happening. There was no action. I guess the most sympathetic person that we know in the commission might be Katie Jacobson, perhaps. But even she was, doesn't seem like she was trying to light a fire under anybody to get to get action started. So, ultimately, we, our group, our tiny, tiny group, you know, talked about it for a long time. And we decided that, and we decided that maybe the best thing would be for us to develop our own proposed initial climate action plan for Lincoln County, and then to go to that commission and say, "You know, it really is time to convene and for people to meet. We've actually got something that could kickstart discussion." So, the bottom line with that is that we were most impressed by, if we looked around at the different climate action plans in Oregon communities, of which there were several, there was a consensus that we were most impressed by what was developed in Milwaukee. And our two city counselors here, Diana Hinton and who was it?
Judy Casper.
Judy Casper, of course. They're aware of all that history. They're, that's one of the reasons that they're particularly interested in the Milwaukee Plan. And one of the things that was gonna happen was, our group was going to sponsor Milwaukee Mayor Mark Gamba to give a presentation here in Lincoln City, along with his Sustainability Director, whose name escapes me. She's a nice young lady, and I, for some reason, I'm sorry, I forget what her name is. They were scheduled to be here a couple of months ago to present on how they developed the Milwaukee Plan. And right the day, practically the day of the presentation, it got shut down by the pandemic, and it didn't go anywhere. So, the thing is, Martin has put some work, we all did, I mean, I've made contributions to it too. We all put some work towards a draft action plan for the county. And I would, I guess I would say that if you, you know, if you wanna talk to somebody about this, Martin would probably be the best person to talk to that I know of. And once again, just under the proviso that any kind, in the development of a real plan that gets, that ultimately gets approved, would be a process that takes a while. And anything that, anything that we come up with at the beginning would just be, you know, a very, a very modest baby step that people wouldn't necessarily take very seriously. It's gonna, it would just, the real value of something like that, we always thought, was sort of as a Kickstarter.
I really appreciate the way City of Milwaukee went about kicking it off and engaging the community and things like that. And that, I think that's a real model that we can follow. The other, the other plan that we see is more like, this is what happened after they got the parties together and that kind of thing, you know, the more extensive plan. And I think Lincoln City can move ahead without waiting for the county. We do need to be aware of that there is this public-private partnership, and there is, I think actually, Lincoln City adopted some kind of a res... Yeah, they did. They resolved to become, be part of the public-private climate change.
They did.
That's right. There is a resolution on the books for that, I believe. So, so the question, I guess, is, do we feel like as a committee, we can take that on? Or, and if we do, what happens to the zero waste? Does that get plugged into this? How big in that are...
Right, those are the questions.
Yeah.
Well, there's another question, though, that I think is even more fundamental in my mind, and that is, we were having a lot of trouble getting traction with this at the county level, and we were also having a lot of trouble getting traction with this at the city level of Lincoln City. Martin and I made a presentation before the city council. It was well-received. They understand that the problem is serious, and some of the commissioners were concerned. But they were, the commission, the city council was really not prepared to take any kind of action to move forward. And they explicitly said, I think, the mayor said, "Well, you know, there's this county partnership. If we take any action, it should be in that, in that context, in the context of cooperation with the, with the county." They kept talking about the importance of not reinventing the wheel. So, that's historically what happened there. And however, that was before this pandemic, which has changed everything. And the point I was trying to make is, we were having a lot of trouble getting the attention of our elected officials on these issues even before COVID came. And now that COVID is here, I just have some real questions about whether we can expect any action to be taken.
I think that's a real fair question, Mitch. And a couple of things here. All this, you guys can throw stones at me later, but at least we're not in the same room, so I'm protected. But when I read this question and I looked at these climate action plans, you know, "Does the Sustainability Committee have an interest in developing a climate action plan for Lincoln City?", I wrote, "No." And that's not because I don't believe we need one, or that we would, that it's something we should do. I don't think it's within our ability, right?
Scope.
And I think it's telling that the...
Ability, yeah.
I think it's telling that the Milwaukee form, that this was in the early stages where they were planning on it. They wanted you to send all comments to the Public Works Director. So, they were harnessing not just city staff, but city directors to champion this cause. And obviously, they had the mayor on board. I think that it, you cannot, as a, you know, for those counselors who will watch this someday, you can't assign four volunteers with, you know, their own responsibilities to come up with this plan. We could support it in lots of ways, but this doesn't happen without robust city involvement and commitment, I would think.
Dave, if I may add one thing, as a matter of fact, when you were talking about delegating those responsibilities, it wasn't just internally with city staff. They actually hired very accomplished private consultants that probably did...
Milwaukee did?
I thought, that was my impression. Is that right?
Wow.
Yeah, I think so.
So, the, and there's a link to it for anyone watching in the packet. There's a link to more information on the Milwaukee site. So, instead of just being super negative, I'll just explain a little bit of my notes that I made on that question that Anne Marie provided in our report today, and then throw it open to you guys. But I suggested, my initial thought was, if we start going down this massive project, it's frankly the same concerns I had about tackling zero waste as an institution, as a group our size and a city our size. I tend to still believe that we need more practical projects that we can manage, that are more bite-sized, measurable, and that we can make impactful. I think we were getting somewhere with packaging, for example, and it kills me, the timing, that nothing made it through the sausage-making process at city council. And then the pandemic hit. And what did the pandemic do? It made all of our restaurants takeout joints. And what has Facebook blown up with this weekend is all the takeout material dumped on the beach. And we were this close to making a lot less of it styrofoam and plastic. And, and I think that it's a real sort of gut punch that that's not done yet. And that they're still handing even to-go, you know, Lee's Chinese Food, gives it to you in a plastic bag. And I'm not even sure that's legal, but that's what they're, that's what's happening. And the, I, just one little.
Well, many, Dave.
Yeah.
A couple of things. Many places aren't, are only using plastic because of the virus, so that's one thing. And then the second thing is, city council did pass an ordinance a month ago, I believe, banning plastic and polystyrene, but it doesn't take effect until 2021.
Oh, right.
Thanks for that clarification. So the, forgive me, I'm gonna shut up here and I'm done. But the thought that I had, as opposed to a big project like this, was, would it be possible, or would there be any interest in the committee to tackle sort of a, an opportunity to, to work on different things that we've talked about as a group? Packaging, pollinators, gardening, trails, beach, a lot of things beach-related, tide pools, seal protection, why are there pelicans here now, and why are they not here in another, another month? Debris, trash, all about tides, sort of things that we could do around a bonfire, to do some sort of smores and sustainability kind of event where the committee selects a couple of volunteers every meeting to plan the next two or three. We're only talking about three months of reliable weather that we could do this. But we could have somewhere between three and six events, or even more, that could provide a forum for some citizen science education delivery in a really fun way that I bet we could find funding for, that wouldn't require us going cap-and-hand to explore Lincoln City at a time when they don't have funds. I bet there's partner organizations, I bet Surf Rider and others might be involved, or might be interested. But I would just throw that out as an idea of just one of many things I'm sure we could do that might be more immediate and more doable than some multi-year project that I'm not sure how involved we would actually be as a committee.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's gonna be hard to concentrate on doing a big thing like that as a group. So little projects are probably better.
Okay. Dawn, Mitch?
I am, I'm torn, I'm really torn. Because I feel like there is quite a bit that we could do to maybe provide the city with some advice on moving forward, rather than actually trying to develop the climate change plan, maybe advising them on some steps, maybe a little bit of information about our own city assets that we already have. On the other hand, Dave, you've got a real valid point about, there's just four of us. We all have other huge commitments. And obviously, we wouldn't be, we'd be able to maybe provide some advice, but I don't know that we'd be able to put a plan together. I would, I would like to say though, maybe one thing about what Mitch said about not getting, when, when our groups went to the city council and were able to get them to join the public-private partnership, and then they really said, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think that even before COVID, that that changed. I mean, in the, in the months and weeks in between that presentation and before COVID hit, when Councillor Hinton and Casper said, no, we gotta do this. And a couple of the other councilors are the same way. They're like, we have to address climate. And so I think that's different from what we heard when we were there before. I mean, I wasn't there personally, but was involved in the preparation for that. So, anyway, like I said, I'm really torn, really torn.
What is the group, Mrs. Anne Marie? What if, what if the feedback that gives council is that, is the Sustainability Committee is very much in favor of, of a climate action plan for Lincoln City? And would love to assist whoever or whatever department, whatever staff, in that endeavor? It's not something that the Sustainability Committee would, would drive, rather they would assist?
Well, you know, I mean, here's one idea. We were all set to have Mark Gamba and his Sustainability Director address us to talk, to talk to us here in town about how they did it. It seems like to me, I mean, I know they'd be, now that we're beginning to try to find ways safely, I know that they always kind of wanted the day to come, when it was feasible for them to come back and actually do that. Maybe that's something that we could offer to city council. We could have one, one city council hearing from another city, how, how they did it.
Okay, okay.
I, I, I would be supportive of that and what Anne Marie said about, as far as our committee being willing to advise and assist where we can if somebody else is the driver, I guess. I had, I, well, I'll wait. Do we, do we have before, before I, I didn't see it on the agenda, but normally we have a spot for just the committee members and share or just comment or talk about?
Yeah, I noticed that's not on there, but I think we could create that right now.
Okay. Anyway, so once we're done with this, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So.
So is that a, is that a proposal to, to maybe ask Anne Marie to craft a message that says the Sustainability Committee is, is supportive of the idea of a Lincoln City climate action plan and would be, would do it again to help in that effort if the city wants to drive it? Okay, saw two nods. Mitch, what do you think?
I guess I would, I guess I would say that that is a really very tentative way to, to approach them, to see their interest. And I think that's appropriate, because once again, I mean, I just repeat what I said before. I felt that we were having some problem getting traction on these issues previously. And now I assume, I mean, I simply would assume that city council is worried about an awful lot of other things. So we might as well be realistic when we approach them and just sort of, you know, just remind them that we're available to help, that this is still an issue. But in the spirit of not being too sure that they're, that they're gonna want to work on this now.
I think you're right about that.
Right. Can, Dave, can you craft that into a motion, just so that we can have something official on the record?
Sure. So the, the proposal would be that the Sustainability Committee sends a message to city council that we'd be supportive of the drafting of a Lincoln City climate action plan and would try to find ways to support that action with activities and our, you know, with our time and effort, to the extent that we can, that's practical. And we've talked about the limited number of us and the limited amount of time we have. But despite that caveat, if they're interested, we'd be supportive of that.
Perfect. That's a motion.
It's not a perfect motion, but I'll take it. So. If that's a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Can we, can we slightly amend that?
Of course.
You said activities, if we could say activities and advice.
Sure.
Hopefully, there may be, they may want, we may be able to offer them some of our expertise.
So amended.
Okay, I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Anne Marie, take it away. I mean, to council.
Okay. I will. I will take that message to council. That's perfect. And so I'll take that message. And then Mitch's, or Dawn's gonna put together a paragraph or something that, and to explain what we want to do with the logo thing, that I can also take to council.
Okay.
Okay, and then that takes us.
There we go.
That, that, the logo thing was assigned to Mitch.
Yeah.
Oh, to Mitch, okay.
Yes.
The zero, zero waste description, I think, was.
Was assigned to Dawn, yes. Okay.
So, I'm doing narrative to go with the paragraph, but Mitch is doing the proposal to the city council wording, right?
Okay.
With the logo.
So as soon as I have those items from you respective wonderful individuals, I will put them on the city council agenda.
Well, I'll segue into other business. It sounds like Dawn, you had a couple of things?
A couple of things. One of them is, I'm involved in a project with, that involves Department of Land Conservation Development. And so I'm on their mailing list. And I received today a, an announcement of a joint task force that is to speak to intergovernmental renewable energy. They're setting up a task force and they're having a webinar, or they have set up a task force. It involves Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, Department of Land Conservation Development. And it's to discuss renewable energy specifically related to the ocean, I believe, which is in general. And it's on June 4th at 9:00 AM. It's a webinar. But I thought that there might be some interest here on the committee with that, so.
I appreciate that. I told you about the, the two groups in Newport. And one of the things that they do is, when we had Normal Life, they were, on almost every month, they would have a speaker, a rather accomplished speaker on some kind of environmental topic. I was able to engage an engineer who heads up the wave energy testing facility that they're trying to construct off the shore of Newport. They may have as many as four births for doing testing of renewable energy wave machines that are provided by different third-party commercial vendors. And then the university will actually sponsor the tests. And there is the idea that Newport could become a major hub for wave energy supplying this region. So I would expect they'd be talking about that.
I'm, I'm sure that that's going to be part of the conversation, yeah. And then the other thing I have on kind of a different topic is our, our, oh, thank you, Dave.
You bet. I just shared a link in the chat to that webinar.
Yeah. Our Audubon Group, organization, we have five areas of emphasis in our conservation efforts, climate being one, and we work with the two groups that Mitch is talking about. And then one of them is forestry. And the person who heads up our forestry issues contacted us to, they were talking about Lincoln City's assets with regard to climate. And one of the things that he was wondering about is whether or not the city had thought to do an inventory of our carbon offsets. We have a large amount of open spaces with, that are heavily treed. And so, and I guess this is probably a very small subset of the whole zero, of the whole climate change, well, also zero waste, but climate change issue is just, that's something that Lincoln City could possibly inventory and then have bragging rights to. His, his context wasn't bragging rights, but I think.
You mean, do you mean inventory, do you mean inventory all the trees in the open space in parks?
There's, there's a specific process where you go about doing a carbon offset inventory. I don't know what all is involved in doing it. The Joe that I, that I was talking to me was just talking about what wonderful, rich amount of things that we have that aren't necessarily valued for their impact to climate change, so.
Question, Dawn, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, who does them and are they free?
We'd have, we'd have to look into that. I'm not sure. I should have done a little bit more research, research after he contacted me, but I didn't, so. I could, I could ask him if he knows what, what the process is to go about doing something like that, so.
Okay, because I'm, I'm sure city council would be interested in at least a few of them.
I'll come back, I'll come back, maybe our next meeting, I could have more information on that.
Okay, perfect.
I think that sounds like a really fascinating idea. And my, my guess is that we would find that, that half of the equation is the easy one to calculate, right? I mean, it's X number of square footage of places that have trees of X height and, and we can come up with what that part of the offset is. But it's the carbon input that, you know, do we have to figure out how many miles people drive on average to Lincoln City? And what that means in terms of, of carbon and, and then what they're doing driving around town and other things that are manufactured here, because that, that part of it, because we draw so many people from, from all over the place, from Idaho and Washington, we have a lot to offset. So, it'd be interesting.
We do. I think that part of the reason that this came up in our forestry group is because there are, there is monetary value being assigned to unharvested trees that actually permits small property owners who have tree properties, it permits them to get some value without harvesting the trees. And so it kind of came up in that context. And so, so yeah, it was more about recognizing the value of what we have. So I think, because it is, like you said, Dave, it's just one small part of the whole carbon offset inventory, so it's one piece of it. But it gives people a different way to look at if they see a tree lot, like when you're driving through Nell Scott and you see Agnes Creek up there on the side. It's like, there's a reason those trees are there, so.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay, that's all. And I'll see if I can bring a little bit more info about that whole thing to our next meeting.
Great. Sarah, you got anything you want to share?
Um, not anything. I mean, it's, it's been hard the past couple of months to not feel super stymied, like you were talking about with the zero waste and all the packaging and stuff. It's, it's like, yeah, it's, it's been kind of a bummer to see just extra, extra, extra plastic in the world, you know, and around here, all the takeout and stuff. So, I don't know, I, I haven't really, I haven't had time to look into a lot of stuff for these meetings lately, just because of all the craziness and stuff. But, yeah, I'm looking forward to us being able to get back on track with it and hopefully be able to see a light at the end of the tunnel with some of that stuff. And I, I like your idea of like littler projects and kind of, yeah, like getting people excited about it and involved with it, and, you know, so that we're not just seen as rulemakers or whatever, but it's kind of like a fun project or a bunch of little projects that we could all have fun with, so. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't really, I don't have a whole lot else to, you know, to contribute this time, but.
You're, you're a small business owner during COVID-19, and you're joining us for this committee meeting, so thank you.
Yeah.
You've had your hands full. Mitch, anything from you?
No, not really. What, Dave, what's your, what's your feeling about our relationship with Explore Lincoln City? Are we, are we tied with them?
I, I really don't know. I, I, I think that Explore Lincoln City likes to, I mean, and needs to sell the, the value of our natural beauty and surroundings. I, I don't know. What, what do you have in mind?
No, I guess, I guess nothing. No, no, I'm good, I'm good. I think, I, I've got my assignments here, I know that, so I'm good.
I have a long history of going to Explore Lincoln City with ideas that cost money, and I just feel like those days are over for a while.
Yes, yeah.
Again, it's gonna have a great excuse to say, "Price, don't call me."
Uh huh, yeah.
I do, I do think that we might be able to look at that, the things that, the ideas that you were talking about, Dave, the smores and sustainability, we might be able to do some partnering with Parks and Rec on some of those activities. You know, maybe things that happen on the beach or whatever, so, anyway. It's a thought.
That, that reminds me of the thing I tagged you guys in, just as friends or whatever, the little beach cleanup bingo idea.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit about that. I'm not sure Mitch, or certainly Anne Marie or anyone else listening might have heard of that.
Well, it was just a thing I saw on Facebook. I follow a lot of anti-plastic or sustainable pages or whatever, and they posted this little card that basically was like, it was, it was set up like a bingo card. And it basically just, instead of numbers, showed like, you know, plastic bottle, you know, fast food container, all these random little things that you end up finding on the beach when you're cleaning it up. And actually, kind of a, not really snarky, but eye-opening thing was the bottom row was companies, like you were saying, Mitch, like Coca-Cola, McDonald's, whatever. And it was kind of funny to see that worked in, but, yeah, we were kind of saying, I tagged Jeannie from Parks and Rec too, kind of to be like, hey, this would be fun, you know, like a fun theme. And so anyways, we were kind of just throwing that around as something kind of just off the cuff, like fun. But yeah, that's something we could do with the Parks and Rec.
And, and just so you know, Jeannie went and talked to Lorie, and Lorie contacted me, and Lorie's already come up with a draft of her own bingo card. She, she was, she contacted me to see about putting Lincoln City Audubon's logo on it. Maybe we can get Squid's logo on it, on it, or, you know, just get some sponsorships and-
Yeah.
So we are gonna do it. We're gonna do it.
Oh, it's marvelous.
What it's gonna look like, but, yeah.
Well, if you had the kind of thing that, yeah, like, I think you guys are suggesting that you bring it into X business and, you know, I completed this and I get a discount or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's my, and yeah, and like, we could even encourage people to use, the Squid's been donating through Pelican Brewing. Pelican Brewing, one of the brewers has been bringing us all of their malt bags, like all these, it's kind of like a big dog food bag. They've been bringing those to us like, a lot, like hundreds of them. And Surf Rider has been picking them up for their beach cleanups. So I think that, obviously, we could get more of those and kind of be like, here you go, people, like use these beer, like malt bags or dog food bags or whatever for your beach cleanup. And then, yeah, if people bring in their bag or whatever, or have their bingo card marked off, then they get community center point, you know, credit or discounts at here at the Squid or, or whatever. But yeah, it was just kind of a funny, it was kind of a fun thing, because it is kind of when you're walking along the beach, you're like, oh, there's another Dutch Bros Cup, or here's another shoelace, or like, whatever, just weird stuff that you find, so, yeah.
So, if we have, if we have a tourist who has a big bag full of trash, how do they dispose of it?
They, they take, the Lincoln City Parks and Rec will take it at the community center.
Okay.
Arch trash thing, and if somebody picks up beach trash or park, city park trash or whatever, they can take it there.
Okay.
It's, I don't think they widely announce that, because they don't want everybody taking their household trash to there. But they do do that. They will take it. So I would guess, especially if you have one of these dog food bags, City Parks also collects those dog food bags for the beach cleanups too, so.
Okay.
Malt bags, the dog food bags, that's even more guaranteed that they'll throw it away for you. They'll dispose of it for you, so. Anyway.
Excellent stuff. Well, that's great. I'm glad you thought of that, Sarah. I forgot that you posted that. I tried to attach it to the chat, but it wouldn't let me, but I guess we don't need to, because Dawn, you can send us a link later to the version you're working on?
It's, Lorie with City Parks is working on it, and she was gonna get back to me today, but we both got really busy, so.
Great. That's cool. Things happening quickly. All right, anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Anne Marie?
I have nothing. I will just wait for stuff from you guys.
Oh, I have a question. Are we gonna actively recruit replacement then for Catherine?
Yeah, how does that happen? Is that chosen by council, I believe?
It's, well, Kathy Steer is the city recorder, and she has to put a posting up, and then people have to apply, and then once there's an application, then there's an interview pro- well, you guys know that part, yeah.
There was somebody a couple of months ago who, you had sent us their information, Anne Marie, and they said they were interested. Does that ring a bell?
It does ring a bell. I don't know.
I don't know that I still have the-
I do not remember who it was.
If I run across it, but I'm sure I deleted it, so. Anyway, there was somebody.
Yeah, you're right. There was somebody, but I don't remember who it was.
We also had a couple of repeat visitors. I remember they came and sat in at, at the meeting at the Northwest Conference Room, engaged in conversation. I don't know, Sarah, do you remember who that was?
Yeah, Nick and Lorenzo. So I could reach out to them, and, and, you know, just to let them know if they want to do it, they can apply.
Great.
The, and as soon as Kathy has the posting, of course, it'll be on the city's website with the application. So if they're interested, they would just want to continue to check the city's website and/or have them call Kathy Steer. I don't know how long it's gonna take her to get it posted. But the more people that call her, the quicker she'll get it posted.
Hey.
Hey.
Well, great. It is 3:59. We're gonna do this in one hour. Thank you very much. And there's no announcement of a next meeting, but it would be the same, the same Tuesday in June, right?
Yep, fourth Tuesday, 3:00 p.m. And with any luck, we'll actually be in the building again.
Knock on wood. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great job, Dave.
Bye.
Thanks all. Thanks, David Twig.